Hello, thank you everyone for joining us today. Today we're meeting with members of the Avon Maitland District School Board. Staff that are eager to help introduce people to working with the Avon Maitland District School Board and so. Here to introduce everyone and to start the show is Hannah Carr.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having us, Kristy, Tina and Dominique. Just as a general introduction, my name is Hannah Carr. I'm the Recruitment and Retention Officer at the Avon Maitland District School Board. And with me today, I have a team of folks. I have Emily Little, who is the Educational Support Staff Staffing Officer who is waving right now. I have Mary Jane Karkak, who is the Learning Services Officer, and I have Lauren Strausser, who is the Custodial Services Officer. So between the four of us today, we're just going to give some general information about what Avon Maitland is about, where we are, and any kind of employment opportunities that are coming through, that are available to to you. Whether you know you're emerging out of a program or you're looking for a career change, or are just looking and interested in working for a school board, we hope that we can provide some information on how we can make that possible. So I'm going to share a presentation. If it lets me. Kristy, did you give me rights to share? I just don't see an option. There it goes, it just popped up, we're good. Okay.
The joys of Zoom.
Exactly. Can everybody see that?
No.
We can't see it.
Is there a delay? Hold on. Oh, here it comes. Here we go, we're up.
We're good.
We're good.
Okay, so just to get us started, I think it's really important to first off figure out who we are and where we are. Um, the Avon Maitland District School Board is a public English-speaking school board that provides educational services to students across both Perth and Huron Counties. And you can see the region in blue is where we're located, so ranging anywhere from Stratford, St Mary's, Listowel, Wingham, Godrich, Exeter. We have schools in all of those communities and in between as well. Um, in particular, we have thirty-one elementary schools and eight secondary schools, which is home to over nine hundred support staff we are going to talk about in a little bit. Here's a deeper snapshot of the list of schools, both elementary and secondary, and exactly where they're located. Um, because our district is so geographically widespread, I think we forget how many schools are in our region. Um, and perhaps you see a school or community that you live in that you didn't know about, or some communities are familiar to you, um, or that you experienced as a student or as a parent, um, throughout throughout your life. I do want to take a moment to share a look into the life of our school sites. Um, if it's gonna let me play it. I'm just gonna play it now. If you can let me know if you can hear it, that would be wonderful. Our thumbs up would be perfect. Oh, it's not gonna let me do that, is it?
The thing that's different about a verbal vacation.
Can you hear it?
You all.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just gonna stop sharing and share my other screen.
Please have the whole place to yourself. The Avon Maitland District School Board, or AMDSB, acknowledges the traditional land of the Anishnaabe and Haudenosaunee in which we learn, unlearn, and grow on as staff and students in colonial Huron and Perth Counties.
At AMDSB, we celebrate each other. We strive to engage, inspire, and innovate. We are always learning.
We celebrate all that we are.
And we celebrate the experiences that have brought us here together.
In whomever we choose to be.
And all that we choose to love.
We celebrate the unique roles and stories that have brought us to be together.
Because we at AMDSB know that everyone has a place to belong and succeed in the world.
Some journeys have just begun.
And others have traveled long distances to be here.
Some roads have been bumpy, but the important thing is.
That we are together.
And creating safe spaces.
To learn.
And to unlearn.
To ask questions.
And to know when to just listen.
To hear all voices.
And to seek those that are missing.
To make a social impact as staff and as students.
And to establish collective responsibility for one another.
Because we believe everyone has the right to not only learn.
But to celebrate who they are.
Who they are becoming.
And to see themselves reflected in our work.
In knowing, no matter where the road takes you.
You will always have a place to call home at AMDSB.
Apply today and come join us on our journey.
Okay. And I just need to switch my screen again, just give me one moment. Can you see my presentation again? Thumbs up? Okay. So I want to take a moment and give the floor to the folks who know the positions best, but we do want to talk to everybody about our current support staff employment opportunities at Avon Maitland. So there's a list of positions here, and we're going to dive into each one a little bit deeper to talk about what the day in the life looks like for each one. Some of the requirements to apply and compensation information that I think is really important. I do want to make note that although these positions do have minimum requirements, we always encourage people to still apply. Should they think they not fit the requirements, we always encourage people to apply and we can have those conversations and see how they can fit with their skill set. So with further ado, I'm going to pass it over to Emily and Mary Jane, who are going to talk about our Educational Support Staff positions.
So I wanted to talk to you about a day in the life as an educational assistance assistant. Um, in Avon Maitland, we are an integrated board. That's how a board is.
Fully inclusive.
Fully inclusive board. A moment. Um, so all of our special needs kids are integrated into the regular classrooms. Um, we don't have any special classrooms for for our kids. And we expect that our educational assistants will support the students that that are identified, but will also support all the other students in the school, in the classroom, at under the instruction of the teacher. In Avon Maitland, we also provide behavior management training, so that's a nonviolent crisis intervention training. So if you are, if you are successful onto the educational assistance supply list or the emergency supply list, we will give you training to help deal with and understand behaviors. Um, I can't really tell you what a day in the life of an educational assistant looks like, because every day is a little bit different.
Well, I can speak to the educational requirements of the position. So we do ask that for our supply EA list or our permanent positions that applicants have a two-year college diploma, so it could be an EA, SSW, DSW, or in related fields. However, we do also consider applicants based on experience. So if you don't meet the requirements of the position with the educational requirement, we still recommend you apply because we can consider your application and let you know if you need to chop up anything or what experience you could have. For compensation for the educational assistant position, our hourly rate for our supply or casual educational assistance is nineteen forty-five per hour, plus four percent vacation pay. For our long-term assignments, which is an assignment that goes anywhere from ten days up to a full school year in a consecutive job, that rate is twenty-one sixty-three per hour plus four percent vacation pay. And our permanent educational assistant positions range, um, starting at twenty-one sixty-three per hour to top of the grid after four years of twenty-four twenty-four per hour plus vacation pay still. With our long-term assignments, there is opportunity for pension, or sorry, for benefits. And with permanent positions, there is pension and benefits with that position.
Yeah, I can speak to the day in the life of the early childhood educator. Most of our kindergarten classrooms, if there are more than fifteen students in the classroom, will also have an early childhood educator. That person would work with their teaching partner to provide and deliver a program and supervision.
So some of the educational requirements for this position, so this position does require an early childhood educator diploma, and then to be registered with the College of Early Childhood Educators. We'll speak to, in a later slide, opportunities to kind of grow into this position. But for our ECEs, the diploma and registration with the college are requirements. The compensation for the ECE position. For a qualified ECE, the casual hourly rate is twenty-eighteen per hour plus vacation pay. For unqualified, so if you don't currently have your ECE, you could be in pursuit of it, or just interested in the role, that rate is eighteen eighty-nine per hour. Again, our long-term assignment rate, so anything exceeding ten days, is twenty-one eighty-seven per hour. And our permanent rate ranges, um, starting at twenty-one eighty-seven per hour to top of the grid after five years of twenty-eight fifty-eight per hour plus vacation pay. And like with the educational assistant position, the long-term assignment has the potential for benefits. And the permanent position has pension through Omer's and benefits without tip.
Our secretary and office assistants work in our schools mainly, although we do have positions at the admin center and our learning resources center. They manage the office. Our most, the most important thing that they do every day is providing attendance reporting, making sure the kids have gotten to school as they were intended to. But also included would be any other office duties, answering the phone, checking emails and and customer service, dealing with students and and parents and community members who come to the desk.
So the educational requirements for this position is a one-year college diploma in office administration or related field. So there are a number of programs that can qualify for that position. And again, related experience would be considered for a requirement as well. The compensation for the casual or hourly position is nineteen forty-five per hour plus four percent vacation pay. For long-term assignments and our permanent positions, it does vary by the position, as there are a number of different secretary jobs within our board. Um, so we would place on the grid according to the position that you're successful to.
Our technical resource assistants, we call them TRAs, it's a position unique to Avon Maitland. Our TRA supports school libraries and also support classroom technology in both elementary and secondary schools. So they would spend some of their time in the library and they would spend a lot of their time helping other staff with technology, coding, and all of that sort of stuff.
So the educational requirements for this position is a one-year college diploma certificate. It could be in a related field to a technical resource assistant. So anything computer-related would be considered a a related field for this. And the compensation is the casually hourly rate is nineteen forty-five per hour plus four percent vacation pay. Uh, the long-term rate, again, anything exceeding ten consecutive days is twenty-one sixty-three per hour plus four percent vacation pay. And our permanent positions range from the entry rate of twenty-one sixty-three per hour to top of the grid after three, four years of twenty-four twenty-four plus four percent vacation pay. And again, with the other positions, uh, there is potential for benefits with the long-term assignment and both pension and benefits for permanent TRA positions. So our emergency, so our emergency support staff list is our list. So if you weren't qualified for those positions as we went through them, but are still interested in learning about Avon Maitland and getting experience in such roles, the emergency support staff list is a great way to do so. I highly recommend it for people that aren't sure what they're interested in pursuing or are interested in experiencing the job to see if they're interested in it. So this list supports unfilled and even long-term assignment positions for educational assistant jobs as well as early childhood educators. We do also have them support our secretaries as well as TRAs. So it is a wide range of opportunities from this list, depending on what your interests are, interests are and what you're interested in pursuing. And Hannah, I think your presentation is, um, sharing um, without being on full screen.
Does it look cut off?
It it does, yes.
It's showing, it's also showing the next slide, so you're on, yeah, you're on presenter, presentator mode. That's good, that's good.
Okay. All right. And then we're going to pass it over to Lauren to talk about custodial services.
Oh, everyone. So what we're gonna do is recap.
Oh, hold on, Lauren, you're you're echoing, so can I get everybody else on mute? Perfect.
Am I good now?
You're still echoing, what happened since?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, did you, you didn't open on a second device, did you?
Nope.
Okay, well. The voice of Lauren is here.
Yeah. Can you hear me now, is it still doing it?
It's still doing it, but you're still audible. I can hear you, it's just you've got omnipotence to you.
Well, see, I'm pretty easygoing, there's two of me.
All right, let's give it a try.
Alrighty, so the daily life with custodian, a custodian basically plays a key role in supplying a safe, clean environment for staff, students and users of our buildings, which, which is extremely important, especially nowadays with the age of COVID and other other sicknesses. So with a custodial role, we do have full-time permanent positions that do come open. Um, most employees come in as a casual custodian at first, and the life of a casual custodian basically allows you to get a fill of position, see if it's really the fit for you. So as a casual custodian, um, we have a system which is called Smartvine, which allows employees to pick and choose and fill in the availability of the time. So there is an opportunity to work forty hours, if you're interested and you're willing to travel between buildings. But by saying that, you also, if you're looking to use it as a fill-in position, or, you know, say, say you're only available twenty hours because you're taking another job. You have that opportunity to block out blocks of when you're not available. So you can pick and choose the days you are available, and you can pick and choose the days that you are not. If you were to go on a week's vacation, you can block out that you're not available, and the system wouldn't call out or try to get ahold of you. So so this is kind of, it's a nice role that allows you to try things out, work the hours you want to work, but in the same hand, you know, have control over your availability and what you're looking for. So most of our custodial positions are afternoon shift positions. They range from two to ten thirty in the afternoon to two thirty PM till eleven o'clock. We don't normally exceed past midnight. The only time that would ever happen is if we had an emergency that potentially shut a school down and we needed support staff to get that school ready for morning. So with saying that, um, again, we have, you do need a grade twelve diploma or a GED for for these positions. With the positions, if you are successful, we offer five days of training and they are paid days of training. During those, we usually have you come in on a day shift for two days to get familiar with the building, to get familiar with working within an environment with staff, students, and how the dynamics work. At that point, I then have you go on to the afternoon shift, where you would work alongside with another qualified custodian who is, who is now working to teach you our SOP standard operating procedures, how to clean a washroom, how to clean a classroom, and how we work through in a strong, efficient way. Now, with that, compensation casual custodians come in at eighteen thirteen an hour, plus their four percent vacation pay is paid out as well. Um, they are paid twice a month. We do have long-term assignments. They do pay eighteen thirteen an hour. Plus, plus with those are some benefits to the odd sick day. It's like one point some days per, per month. With those positions, those are positions that we would say have somebody off who's on a long-term sickness or potentially offer maternity leave, and then we would then come, offer the opportunity to work it, which then gives you security at one building, knowing that every day you're going to the same building, and you've you've had that assignment and you were working towards getting full-time. A permanent employee, if you are successful and you are interested in permanent employee, it is twenty-one forty-four per hour, pleasure vacation. We also have an Omer's pension, which is second in Ontario to the teacher's pension. The great thing about the pension and benefits are, you, again, you're never gonna get rich at this job, but what you're gonna get is a warm place to work, under a roof, a clean environment, a fun environment to go into work, enjoy work. I'm a strong believer, if you can't go to work and enjoy the job you're doing, then that's not the job for you. So with saying that, you know, the pension's great, if you come in at a young age, the nice thing is, you're pretty much getting freedom fifty-five. By the time you hit fifty-five, your pension's full, you're in control of, you know, your next steps. You can certainly work. We have employees that are working well beyond retirement age. We have employees that are, you know, they 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 just enjoy it and they love it, and they've carried on to keep supporting us, but the pension is is a great thing. So with saying that, pass it off to Hannah Carr.
Okay, thank you, everybody. So, leading out of the positions and what they entail and kind of the minimum requirements to to apply, just reiterating, if you feel like you're not qualified or you don't have the experience, we still encourage people to apply because there's lots of other experiences that we do deem equivalent. And you won't know until we have that conversation. So definitely, please apply if you're interested or you're looking to gain experience. As Emily mentioned, on that emergency support staff list, if you're just looking to get experience in a school board or in a classroom in some capacity, it's a great way to start, especially to get a feel again for the dynamic of working in a school and with other support staff and educational staff throughout the district too. So with saying that, um, we've done many presentations before, I've talked to many people, been, I've sat in a lot of interviews, and often people ask, you know, why work for the Avon Maitland School Board? Um, so I really wanted to highlight a couple of those pieces right now, um, from, you know, high-level perspectives as you are trying to decide where you want to work, what kind of industry and what you value in your work environment as the employee. So I know Emily, Mary Jane and Lauren talked about our compensation package. And as Lauren mentioned, our Omer's pension that is provided for permanent staff members is the second-best pension in Ontario next to the teacher pension. It gives you that security, um, moving through your employment that you don't really have to think about. That gives you that that level of comfort that I think stands out amongst a lot of industries that that I've been communicating with. Um, in addition to that, our health and dental benefits is something that I'm learning to appreciate as I get older and something that you don't think about when you're younger, but as you emerge and things start kind of adding up, you definitely realize just how much of a value and how much it helps as an individual while you're navigating your employment that we offer for our permanent staff as well and for staff that are in long-term assignments as it applies. The second part of this is hours of work. So I know we've talked about our casual supply lists as well as permanent hours. Our positions are very much tailored to our employees. So if you're looking just to supplement another job, uh, if you can't handle or you have other things going on throughout the week that you just want to uh, figure out something that works with your schedule right now, the supply and casualists are great opportunities to do that. Really is tailored to you and is flexible to you. With that being said, if you are interested in those forty hours or thirty-five hours a week, you're available to work and that works with your schedule, we do have opportunities for that as well. So it's really important to to recognize that, you know, whatever you are looking for in terms of hours of work, Avon Maitland District School Board is very flexible and accommodating to your schedule. The next three, so strong sense of community, equity, inclusivity, diversity and our teamwork environment all go hand in hand. Um, I may be biased, but I would say the best thing about working for Avon Maitland is the people that you get to work with every day. And I can confidently say that's consistent among our forty sites, including our LRC and our Ed Center. Um, like Mary Jane said, days don't always look the same depending on your role and 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 it's very transactional sometimes, but rest assured, knowing that your team and your school or at your site is there to support you with whatever that looks like. And I can say that in the utmost confidence, especially with COVID, I'd say that we've persevered through a lot of challenging situations and we always come out together and and on top. So I can, I can say that confidently, and I think that the three other people on the call can say that as well. Opportunities for professional development, so this is a big one. Um, luckily, working in a school board, if you are in an assignment or in a permanent position, um, we are constantly offering internal professional development, whether that's internal training opportunities. Formal or informal, we have professional development days that are specifically allocated to our staff because we care and we want to make sure that you're being provided with all the opportunities to grow as a professional and as a person. And we also have what's called an emerging leadership development program that our staff can sign up for. Um, it's accessible to all staff members, not just specific positions, and it applies to on a one- to two-year basis, depending on where you're at. If you sign up, you'll be admitted into the first year and then the second year is is a project that you're able to implement in your job. Lastly, mental health and wellbeing supports. I think this is something that Avon Maitland District School Board really values. It's a huge part of our strategic plan in the sense that, um, one of our pillars is I am well. Um, and recognizing that, you know, our employees need to be well to be able to come to work and support each other and our students, and putting a strong emphasis on that is something that that we consistently do every day. Um, we have a mental health and wellbeing team that provides resources and supports for staff and students in kind of like a co-creative way, so that our staff are prepared to support our students, but our staff are also able to support each other. In addition to that, we also have things like life speak in our employee assistance program, which are formal and informal resources that are available to our staff to ensure that they are supported in a mental health and wellbeing aspect. Okay, the big question on how to apply. Um, so Avon Maitland District School Boards, School Board receives applications through a website called amdsb.simplication.com. So anyone can go to this website and under create account, you're going to select register. This is allowing you to create your own profile as an applicant and you only have to do it one time. So once you set up your initial account, you can see any job postings apply, apply to the ones that you are interested in. Um, you'll be able to choose the category in terms of which positions you're interested in. So support staff is is some of the positions we talked about today. We also have a teaching category for for those graduating with an, with the Ontario College of Teachers registration number, as well as our non-union management positions, which are things like human resources, our finance department, um, and more of a board administration level positions as well. Um, you just have to agree to the terms and conditions and click register, it's very easy. And then your account's registered with the email that you provided in your setup. Um, once that account is registered, you can start adding things like your resume and your cover letter and your contact information. And this is very much your portfolio that you get to share with us and that we get to see in live time. So it's not a, I submit it and I have to keep resubmitting my application every time I gain more experience or additional training. Um, you can adjust it in live time and we'll be able to see it as you update it throughout your applicant experience with Avon Maitland. In addition to that, you can search any open jobs at any time. You'll be able to set up job alerts if that's something that interests you. So if there's a certain position that you know you like and you want, there's instructions on how to set up those job alerts so that you can be informed when those come through. So that you're, you have enough preparation time to be able to apply and feel confident in your application. A confirmation email is sent to all applicants when you've successfully applied to a job to give you that peace of mind that you have indeed submitted your application. There's nothing worse than clicking send and being in this limbo mode, wondering where your application is or if someone's seen it. The confirmation email gives you that peace of mind to know that Avon Maitland has received it. Um, and it's kind of your insurance policy to know, you know, I I've done what I need, I need to do to be able to be considered for this position. Um, in addition to the presentation, for how to apply on our careers website, which is amdsb.ca/careers, there are also formal instructions on how to set up an account. And there's also contact information that you're able to reach out to if you're having issues with the technology piece or you're you're not understanding how to set up job alerts. There's an entire customer service department with AMDSB simplification that's there to support you to make it sure it's. Um there's an entire customer service department with A M D S B simplification that's there to support you to make it sure it's as easy as possible. Um so that you're not scrambling if a job posting is closing or anything like that. In addition to those instructions, any of our current job openings or vacancies are also found on our A M D S B careers page. Um when you go to uh click to apply, it will bring you to the A M D S B simplification. Where you'll either create that account or log into your previously created account if you've applied to a job in the past. Christie, Tina or Dominique, do you have any questions about that from your perspective, just as an external person?
Um I'd really like to get the slideshow off to see faces when we start when we with the questions, so we can see each other a little bit better. I don't know if it's recording just the slideshow, but I would love for people to see us to talk um a little bit more about that. But the apply one, I will definitely include in the recording, the the uh the links and stuff for anyone who's interested after.
Yeah, that sounds good. Dominique, did you have a question?
No, so far so good. Yeah, thank you so much for sharing. I know that um applying to jobs online can be, you know. If feelings of anxiety, but uh we try to make sure that our applicants feel as comfortable and confident. Um and that they know that they can contact anybody um either in our department or with Simplification's customer service to make sure that they know that they've applied. And they feel supported and confident in their application too, because it is a nerve wracking experience for sure.
So this is kind of our wrap up slide. I did wanna make sure that our information was provided in um in the presentation. Because in addition to applying to jobs, it's also nice to know that there's a familiar name or face on the end of that application. Um Emily, Lauren, Mary Jane and I are always available um to answer questions if you don't um know exactly what you're looking for. Or you just wanna have a conversation with any of us, please feel free to reach out, whether that's email or by phone. Um we're happy to support you through that process. Like I said, I know it can be nerve wracking applying to jobs or not knowing maybe where your qualifications and or experience is fit. Um and we really wanna make sure that we help you through that. Um if you're learning or if you're looking to gain experience in a school board and just don't know where that is quite yet. And the last slide is just thank you. Thank you for having us. And um we really look forward to hearing uh from anybody who gets to look at the recording or who have joined us today. Um it's really important that we put a face to the name and I think that we look forward to seeing people hopefully physically in person again. Um but virtual work will work for now, absolutely.
So um Hannah, I have a have a quick question. I've sometimes have clients that have apprenticeship. Like the child and youth worker apprenticeship or sometimes the developmental service worker or child practitioner, child. Are they uh uh equivalent for you in terms of a diploma? We said E C E diploma and um and those, are they equivalent?
Emily, can you speak to that?
Yeah, so um with the E C E position. Um unfortunately, the child practitioner diploma is is not considered equivalent. Um they must a beacon um registered with the College of E C E to be considered for our education. Or sorry, early childhood educator positions. However, the child practitioner diploma can absolutely be considered for our emergency support staff list. Um as a stepping stone for them to get that experience and see if they're interested in educational assistant or in early childhood educator. Um it it does allow them to see both of those positions and decide which one is best for them to pursue further if they're interested. Um and it definitely can um apply to our educational assistant positions. Um unfortunately, with the E C E, it is mandatory that they are registered with that College of E C E.
Okay, thank you. So is it the same process that uh Lauren outlined? Um when, you know, uh when you apply, you go into the emergency list. Is there a process by which of, if I wish, if I choose that my target or my goal is a full time position as a. Um support or uh uh educational assistant or a full time position as a custodian. Is that process for me to get to that role the same in each of these roles?
It can be very similar. Um it varies quite a bit depending on uh the person's qualifications and experiences. It it does vary person to person. Um some people start on our emergency list, move to the supply E A. A list um and then apply to permanent opportunities by getting experience as a supplier in longer term assignments. Others do um apply to a permanent posting and move right to a permanent position um. Right from an external applicant. So it just depends on where the person is. Um and what they're interested in and what their qualifications and experiences that have led them to this position.
Okay, so I have um, I personally have Emily on speed dial. I call her all the time and uh and and uh cuz I, it's always, I never have anybody that's square. I always have everybody that's, I think is a good match, but not quite. So I always have to call Emily and say, okay, so this is what and this is what and this and and every single time. That I've done that and put somebody forward, they have been hired. So I really do think what you said, Hannah, is very important. Even though you are not, might not uh fit the lines exactly, you should probably have a conversation. Because uh every one of my conversations have landed my clients in in a role that they were looking for. So that is a uh is very encouraging for clients and for our clients certainly.
Yes, we always appreciate you uh reaching out as, yes, we do wanna support those people um to find where the best match for them is. And what they're most interested in and and we're absolutely interested in in finding that fit for them.
Another thing that's really exciting for me is, we do have clients who have part time jobs. But they need to top up that part time job that is very consistent, is not giving them enough money. And they have gone on the emergency list and have identified that Wednesday, Thursdays and Fridays, they are available for the emergency list. And they get called in consistently. And so they have a, it's a way for them to get that additional income, top up that part time job. And also explore different things. So it has been, it has been a very, like when I learned that with my clients, that was very, really helpful. Uh uh process and the going in and identifying the days you can work and the days you can't. That is a very cool thing that most jobs don't offer. And so for um, it's also extremely helpful for, you know, people who have have children and have families who are. You know, they're offsetting the income or the hours of the other person. So they can say, you know, this week. Um you know, my husband's working here, so I'm available here and they will, you have blocks of time that they're available and they can fill in and support. The family income and in the still same time provide support for their family and do the childcare because childcare is a bit of a pinch. That is a very, very cool uh neat factor about how you do that. So that's that's uh exciting for our clients as well.
Absolutely. And I think the scheduling piece too, um specifically for educational support staff. You know, your hours are matching the hours that your your children or the people that you're caregiving for are in school, right? So it's not, it's a delicate balance of being able to, you know, leave your job at a decent time to be able to go pick up your 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 children from school. Um and in addition, you know, you have your summers off as a ten month employee for educational support staff, which. Which is very valuable to people who don't wanna pay childcare or have the the means to to put your kids in in camps every week. To make sure that you can get to work and and have that uh available to you. So I know a lot of people really appreciate that, depending on where they're at in their life and and it works. It it really does, especially leading out of the pandemic. Um and and finding meaningful uh and purposeful work and working with students, you know. I think that that people's um mindsets have shifted and I think that there's a lot of value and meaning and purpose in in leaving your day. Knowing that you've you've maybe made some child's day um in the classroom or in the hallway or whatever that looks like um in a school setting.
Um I'm actually, I was, I knew about the number of schools and high schools. I knew that piece, but nine hundred support staff, that's big.
And that's like definitely increased. I think that data is from pre-COVID, so I mean. It's definitely increased significantly. That's why I said more than nine hundred, because. There's a lot of moving parts and support staff is many different employees um and positions that make our schools run. And a lot of moving parts that ensure that our students are safe and having productive days.
So the other thing I wanna share is I know I've had some clients that say, you know, but I live in Stratford and I don't, I don't have a car. So I can't, I can't be driving to Millford Ten and things. There still are lots of opportunities, even if you've identified a smaller geographical area. That that you can work in, um because I know that I've had some people who've that worked out brilliantly. Cuz uh the doing that until they could get enough cash flow to buy a car so that they could expand and apply for the long term positions that are out of town. So it it was a a very much a wonderful work in progress, allowing people to grow with the company.
Absolutely. And like Lauren said, like being able to choose which schools. Um you know, you're not pigeon, you're not stuck. Oh, you have to go to all of them. You're not driving forty five minutes if you don't want to, or some, where a lot of employers don't give you that option, right? So so allowing that flexibility again to really support the employee in the experience and 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 having a delta balance of what works for them and for us. So we can meet in the middle.
Yes. Um so I I've got my questions answered. Christie, do you have any left? Dominique?
I honestly, I think some of it got covered. I was, I know sometimes when I'm in the career center and I'm meeting with people who um are interested. They're sometimes scared when the role says casual. Um only because they're not sure, will casual afford me enough hours to pay my bills and keep my. Uh family, you know, in in a strong position, but it sounds like when you're talking about upwards of thirty five hours a week. Um in that, in in a casual role, um it is somewhere to start and feel like you can move forward.
Absolutely. And we encourage like our applicants or our candidates who have been hired who are interested in permanent work, like. Reach out to us and let's talk about how we can make this work. What are you looking for? How can we support you and ensure that you feel like you're getting to your end goal? Or what that looks like. And it's case by case. Like you said, some people want only two days a week to supplement. Then there's those folks who. Yeah, I wanna work forty hours a week. I wanna apply to a mortgage and and have all those things and I need some security. Um let's have those conversations. Let's see how we can make this work.
Wonderful, thank you.
And one thing I'll ask, just because I oversee um youth, the youth programs here, is that I have youth sometimes in high school. So anywhere ages fifteen to twenty nine, um who are just interested in getting to know more about what professions are out there. So you had mentioned like an openness toward receiving questions. I'm often encouraging them to do informational interviews with employers to learn more. Um so if they were interested in that, would the best way to reach out be through LinkedIn or email? Or are you just open to being accessed and answering those questions anyway?
I um as the recruitment and retention officer, I'm more than happy to have those conversations if you wanna pass my information off to those students. Um I'm happy to talk to them about, you know, what this looks like depending on where they're at in school or or seeking employment in any general aspect.
Great, yeah, cuz some of them are kind of would be ready qualification wise, but others are just curious about jobs. So that's that's good to know. I can send them your way.
Yeah, I do um speak to the students specifically at A M D S B and our career specifics classes and in our graduating um classrooms. Um I did that last year and we have got some great candidates out of it who are on our emergency support staff, you know, who are might be in their fifth year, they've graduated. But um they haven't experienced the workforce in the last three years because of COVID. So you know, they get on the emergency support staff, they're supporting inside schools that they just actually graduated from. Like it's pretty remarkable to see that kinda come to term. Um so yeah, happy to extend that to any students that that come your way and that are looking for more information.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Anything else?
Wonderful. So. I guess it's Tina, did you have anything you wanted to wrap?
I have, I I had the questions that I was looking for and uh wanted to have a conversation, like some of the questions in the that I get asked. Um and I would just read it. First of all, thank you very much for being willing to do this. We get a lot of questions. And so uh Emily, I might not be calling you quite as much cuz I don't have to answer. On a video, I'll just send the video and say, watch that, Emily will tell you. Um but uh so the, thank you very much because I think that there are lots of people who um in their imagination would not apply. Because they think they wouldn't qualify and I think that they would be good candidates and it's very encouraging to have them uh encouraged to apply. And to to have that information about how to be successful, should you choose uh the school board as as an as an employer of choice.
And I would like, I would definitely like to um let anybody know who's watching this video. If you ever wanna discuss your career goals and maybe before reaching the Avon Maitland District School Board, would like to explore that with the Conestoga Career Center. We are free service funded by Employment Ontario to help anyone with their employment goals. Um and so anything that we work towards is is private and confidential and we can help connect you with these employers. Uh and and anyone who can answer questions um and help you with your development. So please be sure to reach out. I'm gonna leave a lot of this information in the video, um including the contact information that Hannah shared in that one screen. Um so that you can reach out directly uh to anyone here who would be happy to, happy to help.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Christie, Tina and Dominique for having us. Um Christie, I'll also send you some instructions on how to set up an applicant profile that are a little bit more formal. Um and then you can share with anyone who's registered or or folks that reach out to you um in the future. Um and as always, yeah, uh Lauren, Mary Jane, Emily and I are always available. I'm happy to help and support you um through the applicant process and hopefully um into employment with Avon Maitland. So we look forward to hearing from everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Enjoy the rest of your day. We'll chat soon, Christie, Tina and Dominique. Take care.